All right. Welcome, everybody, to the Thursday, September 15th, 2022 meeting of the Humboldt County Planning Commission. And as usual, the County of Humboldt Planning Commission meeting will be held virtually pursuant to Assembly Bill 361 until further notice. With that, I'll call the meeting to order and ask you all to join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution of the United States, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Trip, a roll call, please. Present.
Alan Bonjio?
Here.
Noah Levy?
Here.
Mike Newman? Melanie McCaver? Peggy O'Neil?
Here.
And Thomas Mulder.
All right. Looks like we have a quorum. At least we have five, right, out of seven? So, all right. Director, do we have any agenda modifications?
We do not have any modifications to the agenda such. There is a supplemental tonight primarily related to item number H1, which is the Lucas and Myrtle Mini Storage Center.
Sounds good. Thank you. So now we'll move on to item D, public comment. This is time when anybody can speak on anything that is not on the agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to speak on any item that's not on the agenda? Do you wish to speak on anything that's not on the agenda, or are you here for a project? Project. Okay. I'll go to the phones, and it looks like the first is public 2122.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Oh, thank you. This is Uri Driscoll. I just wanted to make a comment on the project out on Walker Point Road. I've been following that somewhat, and one of the things that I find rather disturbing is it appears as though there are certain elements in the environmental community that are kind of almost weaponizing the tribe, even though it appears as though the tribe really hasn't weighed in on this. I don't think it is very wise for them to put words in our local Native American tribal mouths. I think that it's just extremely wrong. If the tribal entities need to have some input into this particular project, by all means they should. But I think that it's quite disingenuous on the environmental community to do such a thing. So that's all the comments I have on that right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I was just informed that we're having some technical difficulty, and we need to take a break for them to resolve that. So I'm going to pause the public comment to let them do whatever it is they do, and we'll come back to it in a moment. All right. I guess we're back and running. So we're still in the middle of public comment. There's nobody here in the audience that wishes to speak, and I don't see any more hands up. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? 7454, please go ahead.
Hello, this is Kent Swawczk, and I would like to reiterate the comments made by Uri Driscoll previously here. I engage in all kinds of what I call torches and pitchforks in political forums, and that's okay. I think it's okay for people to express their opinions. But my biggest concern here is when you have certain groups, and it's the equivalent of calling fire in a theater. And then the last thing I do, there's only one exception to what I've done. In all my years of politics, I do not involve family members or friends of anybody in a political position. And there's a public perception out there that some of these comments that have been made by these different groups, whatever they're based upon, have caused people to go attack and cause family members of someone to have problems. And so if you're going to go out there and you're going to go ahead and do torches and pitchforks, make sure you can control your people, because there's nothing worse than having a family member. There's one exception I've done, and that's Rex Bone's son. Rex brought him into the world as far as making money, and so I have an exemption from that one. But other than that, there's nothing worse, in my opinion. So if you're sitting there in the chairs you're sitting in, and people feel you've done something wrong, and they go after your family and start making the comments and making their life living hell, I don't think you'd appreciate it. So I'm strongly suggesting anybody who knows of anybody who may agree with them, that they basically put them under control, because that's a really big crossing the line. I really, I don't go there, other than the one exception. And the other thing I have is, I, again, same as the prior speaker said, I don't want to have, I want to hear from the tribes. You know, if they're asking for a certain person to resign, a certain person to be sanctioned or admonished, that's fine. They have a right to ask, but I won't speak for the tribes. I think the tribes should go to their tribal council, as one of your members said. That's where the decision has to be made. And if they have a request as far as something out here, as far as what's happening, they feel that they've been done wrong or something, I want to hear from them directly. I don't want a bunch of people. I had a very interesting thing with one of the tippos out here in the Blue Lake Ranch area years ago, and she showed up, and she was ill. So I basically, next time I saw her, I got her some salmon bellies, and that smoked salmon belly is supposed to make you better. But, you know, for someone out there to be representing a tribe and to have a Confederate flag on their hat was a little bit disconcerting to me. And I hope the tribes keep working. I support them 100%. I was so pleased to see today that they're getting federal lands are giving to them. And as far as I'm concerned, let them be caretaker of all the federal lands that we have in Humboldt County. That's a perfect place for them to be, perfect place for them to participate. I have their back 100% of working with the federal government to coexist on the federal lands. Thank you, Robert Hume, for speaking today. Hope everybody plays nice. Thank you, Robert Hume, for speaking.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment, and we will move on to item number E, which is discussion of remote meetings. And this is just an ongoing thing that every month we have to do. Go ahead.
That is correct. Mr. Chair, you know the drill. We just, or the commission adopts the resolution saying that you're going to continue to do basically remote teleconference.
All right. Go ahead, Brian. I don't think we have to.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of item E1.
And I'll second that.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion on it? All right. Trip, a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Noah Levy? Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver? And Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Trip. Now we'll move on to consent agenda, and as usual, I'll go through the consent agenda and ask anybody in the audience or anybody on the commission if they want that item pulled. And the first one item is review and approval of September 1st, 2022 action summary. Is there anybody who wishes to have that pulled? Seeing none, we'll leave that on consent. Item number two, Crystal Kings Farms LLC conditional use permit and special permit in the Miranda area. I see a hand up, and I see commissioners' hand up, so we'll pull. Pull item number two. Item number three is Lost Coast Collective, Inc. conditional use permit and special permit in the Edersburg area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this item pulled? Seeing none, we'll leave that one on consent. Brings us to item number four, Cedar Farms South LLC in the South Fork area. Is there anybody who wishes to have this item pulled? I see a hand, so we will pull number four. And that concludes the items that are on the consent agenda. So, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move items one and three from the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. Thank you. Trip, roll call.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver? Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
And Alan Bonjio?
Yes. So, okay, so that's going to leave items number two, item number four, to be discussed in public hearings. So we will now then move on to old business, and then we will come back to those. So the first item on old business is amendments to the inland zoning regulations, general plan, and coastal zoning regulations pertaining to emergency shelters. Take a staff report, please. Hey, she's got her PowerPoint up.
There you go. See that?
And then, Mary, can you take it to full screen? And then you're good to go.
Sorry, I lost my unmute button there for a minute. I'm Mary Melner, planning and building, here to talk about emergency shelter amendments.
Hey, Mary?
Yes.
So you're not in display mode there. There you go. Thank you.
All right. Sorry for the confusion. So what we have tonight is amendments that are part of the housing element, a couple of implementation measures, IM 54 and IM 71. These make a few changes to the zoning code, both in the coastal and inland areas, minor general plan amendment, and some changes to the local coastal plans. A while ago, the Planning Commission recommended that a safe parking, safe shelter ordinance, and I wanted to point out the relationship between that and the amendments that we're talking about tonight, just so to avoid any possible confusion. Basically, safe parking, safe shelter, which we already dealt with, are kind of a subclass of emergency shelter. So tonight I'm just going to present changes to the base emergency shelter regulations. And the differences are as follows. An emergency shelter, in the traditional sense, serves people experiencing homelessness in traditional structures with building, that meet building codes. It's part of housing law, and they exist now in the inland code, but not in the coastal code. So safe parking, safe shelter, what we talked about previously, serves people in vehicles and other non-traditional structures, and it's a time-limited program. So that's the relationship to our previous discussion. As to what the emergency shelter amendments actually do, the ones we're looking at tonight, the inland amendments do a couple of things. They harmonize definitions with state law to eliminate confusion. They call out the zones explicitly where emergency shelters are allowed. They add the mixed-use zones onto the allowed zones. They add two other forms called day shelters and low-barrier navigation centers, which are variants of emergency shelter that are embedded in state law, and they're often referenced in grant documents and funding, different funding documents. So just to make clarity, we put them in our emergency shelter ordinance as well. And then finally, we cleaned up the standards to make them objective to satisfy Housing Element Law and the Housing Accountability Act. The coastal amendments that we're talking about tonight are actually allowing emergency shelters for the first time in coastal zone, in two zones, commercial, general, and public And the language in that ordinance as well harmonizes definitions and makes objective standards. And as everybody knows, the coastal amendments are not effective until certified by the Coastal Commission. So speaking of the Coastal Commission, they have recommended one, they made one suggested change after the draft that I've circulated and that you're looking at, and that was publicly posted. And that is, they would like us to add in the development standards an allowance for the applicant to show evidence of adequate services for water and sewer. That was their only recommended change at this time. Just a quick review of why this is important. It seems like minor changes, and why are we bothering? But anything we can do to make emergency shelters happen is, in my view, a good idea. Just to remind people, you've seen this before, about a third of homeless people in the county as of the last point in time, or the previous point in time count. I don't have stats for this one. But a third of people who were unhoused or in the unincorporated area, yet we only have one shelter in the unincorporated area, 20 beds. So there's a need out there away from the urban areas. It's hard to get services out there. It's hard to get funding. So the better our, and more usable our rules are, it just takes away one more obstacle. Hopefully, that's all clear, and that's all I have for discussion. I am open. Any questions?
Any questions for staff? Can you give back your screen so I can, there, thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Seeing no questions, I'll open it up for public comment on this item. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Anybody in the audience that wishes to speak on this? All right. Seeing no hands up or nobody in the audience, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the commission. What are your thoughts? Somebody like to make a motion on it? It doesn't seem like it's controversial.
Yeah, I'd move approval on the item. We've already discussed it at the housing element level, and I think this is just implementing what we've already discussed and decided.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Have a motion, seconding. Any further discussions?
I'll second.
Peggy was just ahead of you, Melanie, so we got that. Okay. Trip, roll call vote, please.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Alan Bonjio?
Yes.
Melanie McCaver? Noah Levy?
Yes.
And Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Hey, can I just speak up and say Trip's microphone seems, Trip's microphone seems kind of muzzled or staticky to me, so I just wonder if he is doing anything different or could.
Testing. Testing. Bueller. Bueller.
Well, his thought is, he's normally so crisp and clear, but it wasn't coming through that way for me.
Pretty clear here.
Wanted to do that.
All right. Thank you, Trip. So where were we? I lost my train of thought. We had a, that was a unanimous vote. Thank you. Okay. So now we're on to High Canyon LLC conditional use permit in the Willow Creek area. Take a staff report, please.
I'm sorry, did you say Cedar Farms South?
No, High Canyon LLC conditional use permit in Willow Creek area.
Okay. That was actually from the last hearing that got continued? Is that the one that you want to discuss, or the one that was pulled off consent?
It's the next one on the old business, or, yeah, on old business.
We put on old business ahead of new business.
Okay.
That was the order we were, this was the D, right? Just, that's what the commission asked for, is to. Yeah, that's what I, that's why I was doing it that way. Making sure I didn't miss something.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Baitna Sebado, and I'm the assigned planner for H1 Canyon. H1 Canyon is applying for a conditional use permit and a special permit located in the Willow Creek area. Here is an aerial image of the location for H1 Canyon and its proximity to Willow Creek. The project is located north of Willow Creek and, I'm sorry, located south of Willow Creek and is accessed by U.S. Forest Service Route 6N06 from the county-maintained portion of Friday Ridge Road. The applicant submitted a road evaluation report for the six miles of U.S. Forest Service Route 6N06, which includes photos of the access road and designates the road as being developed to the equivalent of the Category 4 road standard. As the site is for pre-existing activities, no increase in traffic is anticipated as part of the project. The project was referred to the U.S. Forest Service, and comments were received recommending denial due to the access use of Forest Service roads, and requested a property boundary survey, which there is one on record which confirms that the site is not encroaching on public The applicant is applying for a conditional use permit for 42,188 square feet of existing outdoor cannabis cultivation with 3,770 square feet of ancillary propagation. 7,560 square feet of the outdoor cultivation is within nine light deprivation greenhouses with no use of supplemental lights. Water is mainly sourced from a 400,000-gallon rain catchment pond, and supplemental water comes from a permitted well. And there are two points of diversion on site underwater right certificate H100110. A well assessment report was prepared by licensed geologist David Lindberg, which determined that the well has a low likelihood of being hydrologically connected to nearby surface waters and states that the well appears to be a confined aquifer with an expected recharge rate of 18 million gallons of water per year. As the well is only used as supplemental water source, it has been determined that the use of the well will not likely impact nearby surface waters. Estimated annual water use is 413,775 gallons per year, and that's nine gallons per square foot per year. There is a total of 439,300 gallons of existing water storage on site. Drying and curing will occur on site, and trimming will occur off-site at a licensed processing facility. Two to four employees will be used during peak season, and power is currently sourced by four generators, and the applicant is conditioned to transition to 100% renewable energy source by 2026. The light-depred greenhouse is shown in green. The outdoor areas are shown in that kind of speckled area in the northwest corner. The ancillary nursery is shown in yellow, and the proposed facility, processing facility is shown in blue. Generator shed is shown with a red starburst, and the well is shown with a blue circle. The project does include a special permit for the relocation and restoration of a historic cultivation area within a streamside management area. Another special permit is for the continued use and maintenance of two points of diversion within a streamside management area. And one is for a setback reduction to public lands, which would reduce the setback to approximately 200 feet to the nearest cultivation area. The project is consistent with reparational uses on public lands, as the proposed project is not located near developed campgrounds, trails, or other related facilities. This does conclude my presentation, and myself and staff are available for questions.
All right. Go ahead, Brian.
Could you go ahead and speak again to the recommended denial that came from, was it BLM?
It was the Six Rivers National Forest. It is a general letter that we typically receive for applications that are within the 600-foot setback of public lands. And as the site has been confirmed to not be encroaching on the Six Rivers National Forest, we have recommended approval for the project.
Does the applicant have to cross the federal lands in order to get to their land, or is it just the proximity that's at issue?
It, um, let's see.
Meaning that.
Yeah, so the U.S. Forest Service route does go through U.S. Forest Service lands. That looks like for maybe a mile or two. And then again, after going through another parcel, it does utilize another section of U.S. Forest Service lands.
Thank you. Peggy, go ahead.
So in the photographs, there's a photograph of the inside of the nutrient shed, and it's full of propane canisters and gas cans and a four-wheeler, and it looks like a fire waiting to happen. Is that acceptable? It's this one. You can't see it, but it looks like.
I'm not sure what picture you're referencing. That may be within the Water Resource Protection Plan.
It's a color photo, and he says it's on 177, page 177, of the packet that we received.
Let me get to that.
Was that it, Peggy?
I just wanted to respond.
Okay. Is there any other commissioners?
Okay. Yeah, that's from a building inspection that was done in 2018. And that does look like it's within a shed.
There has been, you know, fire issues up in that area, and so is that an acceptable storage of flammables?
Yes, I believe so. Yes.
What do you think?
I would say yes. While there are a number of canisters there, it would not trigger the reporting requirements under 6.95 of the Health and Safety Code. And so as long as it's completely contained within a structure, it would be acceptable.
Just a wooden structure is fine?
Anybody else who has questions for staff before we open it up to public? All right. Seeing none, I will, wait a second. Let me get over to panelists here and just double-check. Yep, seeing no hands, I'll go to public, and the first public is 7454. Yep, seeing no hands, I'll go to public and the first public is 7454.
This is Kent Swawski and I agree with the comment from the commissioner, this is an accident waiting to happen. As far as the combustible zoo, if that's contained in a wooden structure that doesn't have a one-hour rating, it's totally worthless. There's nothing about anything but it'll probably come on and cause a fire. And I did quite a bit of research on this. These people are being allowed to, under the general plan, before cannabis was developed, before we had any of this stuff happening out there, these people were allowed to go ahead and make a disclaimer. And let's see if I can find that disclaimer here. I'm sorry, I've got another phone I've got to get rid of here. So basically, the disclaimer basically says we don't, we don't have any fire protection. And, and that doesn't protect the neighbors, it doesn't protect anybody. So I wanted to develop, delve into that a little bit more. And so the closest, according to CAL FIRE, as far as I could tell, I didn't get definitive answers, but it sounds like the closest place for first responders is coming out of Trinidad. And where this location is, we kind of confirmed it probably an hour and a half response time for anybody coming out of Trinidad. And I really caution you to go ahead and permit any of these facilities out there where they don't belong. Of course, then you've got the Forest Service road, so who would be the backup? Well, the backup, the closest responder would be the U.S. Forest Service. But they're not going to buy the fire that's cannabis-related. They, that's not their policy. They don't want them there, they don't want them crossing the road. And so I'm, I'm going to go ahead and do something and I have to apologize for this because it's kind of negative, but I'm going to put you on notice that should you permit this process, this particular permit, or any other one that has the same thing, that doesn't have first responders, if there's loss of life or property because of a fire that starts or an accident that happens there, that, that your staff and this particular commission would be held personally liable. And this, this is a dream for an attorney. So if this thing should go ahead and, and I hate to be pushy or things, but it's just common sense, this does not belong up there. You had multiple times, my understanding, where CAL FIRE said it doesn't belong out there. And, and yet, so you need to condition this that they have the first responder, either be the federal government or Willow Creek Fire District, which are the two closest ones, or possibly Salyard District, go ahead and they're willing to do a will serve. Otherwise, this is nothing but a real hot potential mess. That area has burned multiple times up there, as many of us are aware, and it could well burn again and it just would be really sad to see this whole beautiful world of ours go up in flames just because somebody was allowed to have a commercial permit out where it doesn't belong without having correct first responders. So that's a serious comment to me and it's, it's on a couple of other applications we have here. And even though it says in the general plan that it's okay to just go ahead and say we acknowledge that we don't have first responders, it's not okay with me, it's not okay with the environment, and I hope it's not okay with you folks. I recommend that you deny this unless there is proof that they have access to somebody who will will serve for first responder. Thank you for talking to me, Speaker.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker is John Smith, please.
Yes, hi. Just a couple of points I just, I just want to bring up. Is that, that photo that is being referenced, that was when the farm was under the old owner? So the, the current owners, I would presume don't use the same practices that the previous owners used and that there is, the Forest Service being a federal agency is going to deny any project. They're not going to even allow a cannabis project with conditions of approval. That's it. That's all.
All right. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? Is there anybody in the public here that wishes to speak on this item? All right. Seeing that, I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. Go ahead, Brian.
I guess I just wanted to circle back to one of the, the public comments and also, you know, the picture, you know, bringing up the fact that these are going to be around generators, there's going to be a lot of fuel. So can we have a staff response in terms of who is responsible for responding? Should there be a fire in that area? If it is outside a fire protection district? It seems like in the past we've required applicants to contract or work with fire protection districts to get them to work together, but am I, am I remembering that incorrectly?
I don't recall ever requiring somebody to have proof they're in a fire district. I'm not saying you're, you're wrong, I just don't recall it. The policy, the condition that's being proposed is the policy of the general plan. And so from a policy perspective, that's what staff is recommending, is following the policy guidance established in the general plan, which is to have people acknowledge that they understand that they do not have, they're not within a fire protection district. So who would respond? It is within the CAL FIRE responsibility area, the state responsibility area. So CAL FIRE is the, the primary responder, but normally what happens is that there are mutual aid agreements. So the first person, the nearest station would typically be called out and that would, in this case, probably either be the U.S. Forest Service, which I think is in Salyard, or it would be the fire district that's in Willow Creek and maybe both. Depending on, well, the other thing is assuming they have rigs to get into that area. Forest Service clearly would.
That, that it, Brian? Noah, I see you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I was also somewhat concerned about the state of the conditions that were documented in those photos from the building instructor, from the building inspector that Peggy referenced. But I wanted to note that that report is from January of 2018. And so then a caller who I believe said he was John Smith, but didn't explain what, if any, connection he has to the project, said that this is when it was owned by a previous owner. So I just was wondering if staff could clarify if, at the time of that building inspection in early 2018, was it a different ownership? And also, do we have the current owner in the audience on Zoom or anything like that to speak to the matter of whether fuels are being stored in a different or similar condition?
I can confirm that the site was previously owned by a different applicant and owner. It's changed hands, I think, twice now.
Okay. Is TR the, the property owner? Okay, I will let them come on then to speak to Noah's question, but I'm not opening public comment back up, I'm just letting the applicant speak. Go ahead, TR. Are you there? Star six to unmute. Okay. TR, are you there? Can you speak? Can't do anything if they won't speak, so we'll move on. Is there other questions from the commission? Other thoughts?
I guess I, I wanted to circle back to the director. So it makes sense to me to have applicants acknowledge, you know, the fact that they're not in a, a fire area in terms of them being aware. It doesn't seem, though, to mitigate the, I guess, additional risk of fire. I mean, is there anything in the operations plan that speaks to having, you know, water storage for the purpose of fire suppression or fire extinguishers on site?
The project is conditioned to designate a minimum of 2,500 gallons of water for fire suppression only and to have the appropriate fire hose attached for CAL FIRE.
Thank you.
All right. Melanie, I see you have your hand up and then I'm going to put mine up behind her. Go ahead, Melanie.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I, I, I do know that CAL FIRE will respond to any, any fires. I mean, you know, Forest Service as well to protect forest land. And I was just wondering if the director knew of any agreements that were being worked on in terms of liability?
Not sure I understand the question relative to liability.
Well, I mean, if they were to respond, which I, you know, I know that they would, what is the situation currently with any agreements that may be being worked on or past records in terms of the homeowners or the agricultural business owners being liable for any fires they start that then, let's say, worst-case scenario, were to start a forest fire or at least cost the, you know, those groups financial impact?
Yeah, thank you. I, I am aware that when CAL FIRE responds in particular and they often will send a bill to the property owner for the cost of that response.
Right. Thank you.
All right. So I have a question pertaining to the structures that are on site. So we're being told that we have something called a nutrient shed. That's the first time I've ever seen that term come up, but it appears to me that above that nutrient shed, there is some type of a living area. So I understand this is an existing building that was there, but now we're repurposing it to be part of a commercial grow, an acre worth of grow out in the middle of nowhere. So what standards will these buildings, there's a few outbuildings, the one that shows the four-wheeler and the, and such, will they have to be brought up to, to standards, to current standards? I mean, I'm dealing with on SRA projects right now, dealing with all the wooie standards and it's, it's a huge undertaking, not only expense and, but just finding the products right now. So, I mean, we're taking, I, I understand this is pre-existing, but we're giving it a new use, so it seems to me that this falls under having to be brought up to the current standards. And I haven't, I don't see a picture in here that even comes close to what standards would be.
So we'd just call your attention to condition number seven, which requires that all of the structures that are used in conjunction with cannabis be permitted and that would be under the current building code.
Okay. That's good. That's what it should be. All right. Noah?
Yeah, thanks, because I, I appreciate that you brought that question up because I just noticed something else that I hadn't noticed previously. It's just a few pages earlier than the photos that Peggy referenced. It's, it's the Building Divisions referral comments for Cannabis Operations. It's that same report we've been talking about that is from January of 2018. But I just noticed at the bottom of it and right below this, right above the signature, it says unsafe wiring exists. So it's kind of, I guess, a follow-up on Alan's point. I would, you know, I think that in general they've met the requirements of the cannabis project itself, but I wanted to be assured that the unsafe wiring that was detected in a building inspection from over four years ago, as well as any other ways in which fuel is not being stored according to code and so forth, that that would have to be corrected as a part of our approval or before this goes forward. And is that what you just said, condition, is that what the director just said, that our conditions already require that?
That is correct. That is a standard condition that we apply part of what the 1.0 ordinance did. 2.0 does the same thing for pre-existing, is that it seeks to bring anything that's being used for cannabis into compliance with current codes. And, and so the requirement is, is any building, any structure that's used and associated with the cannabis activity be permitted and that it be permitted under the existing code.
What's the timeline for that?
They have one year to present plans to us in terms of what they're going to do to bring it into compliance and then they have one year to complete all the work.
And will that require a building inspection to confirm that the work has been done appropriately and to the standards?
Yes.
Okay.
I would think that if there was a fire hazard or a health and safety hazard, that two years is a little long to require it to be corrected. If you're going to have people living in it or, you know, flammables or what, what have you. You know, because in reality, you're supposed to have a permit before you build the structure and a lot of these structures were built without permits. So, you know, the rest of us, they have to go out and get permits and do everything, you know, correctly, are held to a different standards and they can come in after the fact and get a couple of years, don't have to tear it down, don't have to fix it and, you know, in an area that could cause a fire hazard. And, you know, there could be other people that receive damages, the taxpayers have to pay costs, you know, these things get out of control quickly.
So if, if I could share...
Yes, please.
The timeframes I just cited are out of the ordinance. If the commission finds that in order to protect public health, safety, and welfare, that it's important to require that certain corrections be made sooner. And I think electrical wiring that is incorrectly done probably falls under that category that a condition could be added to require that the wiring be fixed within, you can, three months, six months, whatever it is. And that also the site be inspected for a storage of hazardous and flammable materials within that period of time that it comply with the county COOPA program.
You have flammables and then you have this four-wheeler that drives in where all the flammables are and into close quarters and that itself could start a fire just from the motor. So, you know, maybe not storing them all together would be safer. I don't know. I mean, you can just switch a light switch and start a fire. There's gas in there.
I feel like the director's suggestion of having the inspection to confirm the appropriate storage of hazardous materials as well as having the electrical safety issues corrected within three months seem to be appropriate modifications to the conditions of approval and should be made.
I agree with that. I think that we should even have those electrical deficiencies corrected within three months as well as the inspection.
Okay. Any other thoughts? All right. Anybody care to make a motion on this one then? Is there more discussion? I'm, seems like we kind of finished up, so.
It was the BLM or the Forest Service that wrote a letter opposed to it?
Forest Service.
Forest Service. And you seem to indicate that that's sort of routine or is this not routine?
Take a shot at that. In our early conversations, you may recall with the federal agencies, since they absolutely cannot condone cannabis cultivation nor transport of cannabis across federal property, they can, cannot support a cannabis cultivation that uses one of their access roads.
Do that routinely?
Yes.
To every one of them?
Yes. Yes. And, not to beat this dead horse to death, but one of the things that, early on, the commission resolved to do was to recognize that it is the cultivator's risk that if they're on federal property with what the federal government still considers a Schedule I drug, that then, there could be consequences for that.
Well, I can make a motion if everyone feels ready.
Go ahead, nobody else seems to be wanting to plunge into it, so go ahead, Melanie.
All right, I'll motion to adopt the resolution to find that the zoning operator has considered the addendum to be adopted from the D for the CMMLO, and make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use and special permits, and approve the High Canyon LLC conditional use and special permits as recommended by staff, subject to the recommended conditions. With the additional condition, based on the need to protect public safety, that the electrical deficiencies be corrected within three months, and there be an inspection that takes place also in the next three months of the flammables that were recorded on-site and that may be present now and up until the inspection.
Thank you, Melanie, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Chair, just a clarifying question. I take it from the motion maker's motion that part of that was to add to the findings with evidence that in order to protect public health, safety, and welfare, that these changes were necessary. Correct, is that correct, Melanie?
Yes.
Yes. Second is good with that. All right, Trip, roll call vote, please.
Alan Bongio?
No.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
And Peggy O'Neil?
No.
Motion carries three-two, the project is approved. Thank you, staff, everybody. That brings us to items pulled from the consent. Why don't we, it's, we're at seven o'clock, why don't we take a quick break before we go into items pulled from consent? So, we'll take five minutes and we'll come back. All right, thank you, everybody. You say when?
Recording in progress.
All right, welcome back, everybody. And we will now take up items that were pulled from consent. And the first one is the Crystal Kings Farms LLC conditional use permit and special permit in the Miranda area. Staff report, please.
Thank you. I'll share my screen here. Good evening, commissioners, my name is Megan Ryan, and I will be presenting the Crystal Kings LLC project. The project was continued at the March 17th, 2022 Planning Commission hearing as an appropriative water right had not been issued by the State Water Resources Control Board. The appropriative water right application was submitted in February 2021. It remains unissued. As proposed, rainwater catchment can support 35% of the annual water demand. Planning staff is recommending the project move forward with a reduction of the cultivation area to what can be supported by rainwater catchment, approximately 5,490 square feet, until a water right is issued by the State Water Resources Control Board as specified in Conditions 6 and 7. The power for the project is provided by one 35-kilowatt generator. Based on information from the agent, historically, the applicant was using a larger generator to support an indoor nursery and power fans and lights in the greenhouses. The current generator would be used in the drying in the barn and for a smaller propagation area than what previously existed. The operator will be putting more starts in an outdoor greenhouse to use solar energy, and this would represent a reduction in the type of the generator and the number of hours the generator would run. However, planning staff did include a condition of approval to provide an energy plan and reduce generator use to 20% by 2026, as stated in Condition A11. The applicant is aware of the condition and is opposed to it. With those conditions, the planning department is recommending approval of this project. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you walk through the calculation of how much the rainwater catchment can support?
Yes.
Like, what are the assumptions underlying that, that number?
So, there are two assumptions, one is the square footage of the structure that will be used to capture the water, and the other is the average annual rainfall rate. Those two numbers are multiplied, and then multiplied by conversion factor of .623.
And what is that number of inches of rainfall that you use in this one?
I will check that for you.
And I guess what I'm getting at is that the last, I don't know, four out of the last five years have been significantly less than our historical average. So, I want to make sure we're not setting up this applicant to fail. Are we using, like, the last couple of years' average as opposed to the last 20-year average, or something like that?
So, the estimate that was used is 56 inches, and that was averaging rainfall values from 2011 through 2020.
And do you know what the rainfall in inches was for 2020, 2021?
I will check for you, but I think it was approximately 41 inches, according to the operations plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? All right, did you have more to go, or were you done with your presentation? That was it? Okay?
That was it for tonight.
So, seeing no more questions, I'm gonna open this up to the public. We have two hands up, 7454, your first?
You know, I could be corrected, because there's so many, and I was dealing with zoning. But if I understand this, we're adding, the storage is currently 15,000 gallons of hard-sided tanks, and I could be correct, but if I remember, the staff portion, they're gonna add 38 more poly-puret, whatever, tanks in the thing. I don't know if your mitigated negative deck basically included the negative impact upon the environment of these tanks, and especially 38 of them. So, you know, if this is permitted, I think they should have a condition in here that they go ahead, instead of 38 tanks, they put in a ring catchment pond, or something of that nature instead. It's the environmental consequences of these tanks out there is horrendous. And then, of course, if this project goes through and then falls apart, what are we gonna do with all these toxic tanks that are out there? So, I strongly recommend that it's a condition, or if you have a condition for the 38 storage tanks, they at least be given the option, and again, I would be reaching out for a volunteer if the person's in the audience there, say, hey, we're gonna go ahead and put in a pond, which is so beneficial to the environment compared to all these tanks out there, they seem to stick all over the place, I think they're a major problem. It says, and I didn't quite get the generator thing, it's powered, provided by a generator, it's about 20%, I was multitasking. So, is this one gonna be totally renewable, as far as the generator goes, by 2025 or 2026? Or is there some other formula involved with the generator usage here on this particular one? And I don't know, again, my question again is, I'm not sure if this was one of the ones that had, is signing that particular agreement, or if the Miranda area, maybe they'll have a fire district out there. And if they don't have a fire district, I recommend that they find someone who's gonna do a local serve for first responders, again, same as the last time. Congratulations to the two people who voted last time who didn't put their personal finances and freedom in jeopardy, I congratulate them. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, next caller is 7974.
Hello, this is Steven Liu, I'm the agent for this applicant. I just wanted to address a few different things that have brought up. One is the condition on the generator. This issue has been discussed in the past, and this particular project has scaled back from the previous generator use. The barn on the site was previously wired for an indoor, and there is a much larger generator than what is being proposed. The generator that's being proposed currently is equivalent to what would be needed to power a 200-amp panel, which is similar to what a residence would be developed with on this property. And so, it's pretty equivalent, and they're not trying to propose a ton of usage. The majority of the usage is going to be limited to certain months for the lights, which are just string lights, as well as the, you know, mainly for drying for the project, which would be a couple of months out of the year. Using diesel, it's not, well, if it's flammable, it's pretty hard to set a fire using diesel. They're not using gasoline generators. It's, from a fire safety perspective, we really shouldn't, you know, we should be talking about fuels, and which certain fuels are a much higher fire risk, which would be gasoline, for example, whereas diesel is not going to be volatilizing and sparking and starting a fire. Economically, there's really not any, and from a space perspective, there are setbacks and strengths on this property that limit the potential for developing a pond. That's why tanks are being proposed. And also, the same constraints limit the ability to offset the fossil fuel usage with renewables. I would propose a couple of different alternatives. One would be to transition off of fossil fuels for powering lighting. That would represent maybe a 10% or 20% commitment and offset to renewables, and then that would limit the generator usage to basically a couple of months out of the year. Currently, financially, with the way the market is, this particular property has not been cultivated since 2014, and given the market, you know, honestly, before this hearing, the applicant proposed to potentially triple-R this property. And if the Planning Commission desires to impose the financial constraint to transition off of generators, that might kill this project. And I would petition to see if there's an option to explore, if that's what the commission truly desires, to give the applicant an opportunity or alternative to triple-R instead of, and this can be before they even plant, to give them an option to elect a triple-R instead of choosing to implement a full replacement of fossil fuel usage for the property, or for the project moving forward, because that would just kill the project, and it's not, it would no longer be viable. And that would be a way to salvage something and get some money to restore the site. So, those are the talking points the applicant wanted me to make. Unfortunately, with economic constraints and the way the market is, there's, we have to balance that with what can actually be done here. So, I'm available for any other comments. The operations plan was developed. If staff can pull up the total rainfall depth, I did do analysis based on local rainfall gauge using the 2020 through 2021 water year for the anticipated rainfall that could be captured off the roof, so that is an operations plan. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Brian, do you have a question?
So, just to be clear, you know, we have historically put the requirement to move off of generators within four or five growing seasons. The applicant's wish is that if we are going to be consistent and put that requirement on there, that you'd rather have us continue this so that you can work on a triple-R for it? Or the applicant can work on a triple-R for it?
Correct, because he perceives that, given that timeline, with, and the likelihood is that there likely would not be cultivation. If this was approved today, there may not be cultivation next year, because it's just too uncertain. The cost of the storage tanks, right now, it's about a dollar a gallon. If you find them used, you can get them for 30 to 50 cents a gallon. But, you know, just in storage tanks, not including labor, materials to plant, you're talking about, you know, spending anywhere from $200,000 to like $100,000 just for water storage, you know. The labor and the cost, you know, talking about pounds, 100, about $200, $300 a pound to cultivate for this size canopy, you're looking at, you know, somewhere around 36,000 pounds. And so, you're looking at huge costs to grow. And, you know, if someone's, at current prices, if everything goes right, and you're able to harvest and sell everything, and make about 100 bucks a pound, you know, that the risk doesn't, and if everything goes perfectly, which, when you're talking about Mother Nature and cultivation, you have to expect 30% or 50% loss due to mold, due to not growing the proper marketable strains, because you're picking something that the consumer market may change. And so, there's a huge risk, and right now, the cost benefit is not there. And so, for the applicant to get, secure this entitlement, and to commit that in two to four years, which they may not be able to grow for two to four years, or for two to four cycles, harvest cycles, by the end of, you know, you're talking about next year, 2023, 2024, 2025, so we're talking about three years. Who knows when the market will come back, potentially for federal legalization? And so, there might be a sweet spot where, okay, this year, it does make sense to cultivate. What does that look like with respect to spending that much money for that, and committing to spending that money to bring the site into compliance, to, within two years, to invest in storage and renewables, and spend half a million dollars to try to, and then spend another half a million dollars to grow?
You're gonna have to wrap it up.
You know, so that's economic, if they would prefer to have the option to triple-R, if that is, you know, if that's the intent to limit the development of the site, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Question?
All right, go ahead.
So, I presume we'd need to continue this to a date uncertain so that they can identify a counterparty with which to do a triple-R, or another site?
That would be the ideal, but frankly, there are not a lot of sites, receiving sites, that are left available. There's a lot of tripleRs that are approved, sites that have been cleaned up, and basically entitlements, looking for a home. I think one of the things the commission may want to weigh with the applicant's request is that this would allow triple-R to be granted, and to require then that the site be remediated, all the evidence of the cannabis and everything be cleaned off the site. And then, they would have an entitlement that they could move to another piece of property if they could find one, but then this site would be cleaned up and would result in a covenant to not cultivate on the site any longer.
But just in terms of our action tonight, it would be to continue this to a date uncertain?
I would, we could probably continue it to the next meeting, frankly, and just condition it. All right, let me get back to our panel. Is there any other questions, any other thoughts on this?
Well, I guess, I just want to state for the record, I don't support indefinite diesel-growing, you know, in perpetuity, just because of market conditions. So, we have to weigh, you know, just like they have to weigh the economics, we have to weigh the impacts to the environment and to the public health, safety, and welfare. So, if they don't want to... So if they don't want to go down that path, then I'm prepared to move on.
I see Noah has his hand up, so let's see what he has to say and then Mike just come back to you to do that. Go ahead, Noah.
Yeah, I just wanted to chime in to say, first of all, it's actually four full years. As I read the conditions, they would not have to make the transition off of fossil fuels until the end of 2026. So that is four plus years, four full growing seasons. And we actually, or the staff recommended conditions are giving them a little bit of an additional headroom because they really were only going to require that they be 80% off of generator use by the end of 2026 and still allow for 20% generator use, which is, if anything, a little bit more generous and more tolerant of generators than what we have typically allowed in other projects. So I just wanted to call that out. That, you know, it's unfortunate if this operator cannot meet those conditions and make a plan that they feel is marketable. But I think we're giving them all the leeway that we can with the conditions that we were prepared to recommend.
All right.
Isn't it the water storage that's really the issue? Because I mean, they could grow for four years and go, okay, we're not going to grow after four years because it costs too much to put in the renewables. But it's the water storage that they have to do immediately that is also prohibitive. So I say they're not ready to go.
Well, especially if it's going to be 100% rain catchment, you know? You can't do it without water storage, so.
I don't see any other hands up, so Brian, if you.
So I'd like to move to continue this item to the meeting of October 6th?
Yep. Okay. We have a motion to move this to the meeting of October 6th or continue it to the meeting of October? We have a second. Is there any further discussion on that? Noah, your hand is up. Is that up again or is that just still up?
All right, I just flipped it all.
Okay, no problem. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure that I didn't, so.
Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
Peggy O'Neil?
Yes.
Alan Bongio?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
And Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Trip. All right, so that brings us to, yeah, item number four, Cedar Farms South LLC in the South Fork Mountain area. Take the staff report, please.
Chair, before we start, I think that this was pulled by a member of the public who may be satisfied if they're just allowed to make their comments without a staff report.
Okay. I'm willing to see if that is a possibility. Let me, so it looks like it's 7454 is the only person who has a hand up. Kent, is there something that?
Yeah, yeah, let's shortcut this particular one. Again, I do want to applaud you because in planning, if I'm doing a subdivision on your last decision or doing any kind of a project, my financial feasibility has nothing to do with the project and criteria. That's strictly up to an applicant to show, to decide whether he goes forward. So I hope you will continue not to let that be a thing, well, this project won't happen like you did. I might be able, not be able to do a subdivision if I have to put in curb, gutter and sidewalk and pave the road. So applaud that attitude. On this particular one here, we, again, we have a 2,005,000 gallons tank. And so it looks to me like we're way under on water storage here. Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe we, it's only like a seven line description of the project. And then, of course, I applaud the fact that we're going to continue the transition around 100 to 120 by 2026. That seems to be the norm. But again, we're looking at water storage on this particular one. And unless I'm not seeing something, I think I dropped in the staff report. And again, I think this is another one, if I recall, and you should ask the staff, do they have that same waiver in there that doesn't protect the community? And if they are within something where they can have a join or be part of a first responders, like a local fire department and have the services, fine. If they're not, they should not be here. It's just, it's plain and simple. It's whenever you see a project that has that on there, I, for the same reason I mentioned before and same caveat I mentioned before, it just, in my opinion, is ridiculous to allow any kind of commercial venture out there where you don't have fire protections in this day and age. I mean, with what's happening out there. And these are commercial ventures that can, in fact, we had one of the hoop houses burned the other day and that will be a reoccurring item, I think, you're going to find out there with what happens. But that's just a precautionary thing. I don't think any of us want to see it burn out there. And I'm recommending that any of these have a condition of that nature that they go ahead and receive a will serve from a first responder or however, whatever it takes to get them. I know Rolling Metals, I think they offered 30,000, which is nothing, you know, for that. And I think they were told to pound stand on that. But anyway, these all, these all need to have service here. That, any commercial thing should have that. I don't care what kind it is. If you have a lodging permit out there, you're required to have certain amount of permits, certain amount of water storage, certain amount of capacity. And any commercial permit like this should be required also. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. So is there anybody else in the public that wishes to speak on this one? Anybody here that wishes to speak on this one? Okay. Can I close public? Yeah. So I'm going to close public comment and I'll bring it back to the commission.
Sure, just for staff, how do we determine that the amount of water storage is sufficient? I assume that has something to do with looking at the well productivity to make sure that it functions throughout the year? But can you, can you address that for us, please?
I can speak on the well assessment that was done for the project, which was prepared by David Lindberg. He states that the well has a low likelihood of having any direct connection to surface waters and appears to draw water from a confined subsurface aquifer, not connected to any confined aquifer. The water well completion report shows an estimated yield of 25 gallons per minute. And in October of 2019, a two-hour airlift pump test showed a drawdown of 10 feet, which is pretty minimal. And as for the requirement on water storage, we typically require more water storage to meet a forbearance period of diversions. But in the instance of having a productive well and an appropriate assessment, you know, we don't require any additional water storage.
Thank you.
As for the fire situation, this project is in the same kind of situation as the last project. It is outside of a fire response area. CAL FIRE commented on the project, saying that they had no comments at that time. This project is also conditioned to have a minimum of 2,500 gallons of water storage designated for fire suppression and to have the appropriate hose attached.
Any other comments or concerns? I'll comment. This is, this project is much like the one previous that we were talking about, the Forest Service issue. This one's just even more remote. I have a hard time approving projects when we're getting a letter from the the federal agencies that are saying, you know, they're not going to support this project. It's the wrong place for a project to be. It's out in the wilderness. It's out in the national forest lands. It's very sad what's happened to this part of our country out there. So I'm going to have a hard time supporting this. Somebody's going to have to convince me before I'm going to be on board with it, where it's at.
If I could, through the chair, so this project was referred to the US Forest Service and no comments were received. The project does, however, utilize a good portion of the US Forest Service road for access.
Yeah, Route 1. All right. Any other thoughts? All right. Where are we at? Somebody want to make a motion on this one?
I will. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution to find that the commission has considered the addendum to the adopted MINTNAG deck of the CMMLOO as described by Section 15164 of the State Secret Guidelines, make all the required findings for approval of the conditional use permit and adopt the resolution approving the Cedar Farms South LLC conditional use permit as recommended by staff subject to the recommended conditions.
Thank you, Brian. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Noah. Any further discussion? All right, Trip. Roll call vote, please.
Alan Bongio?
No.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Brian Mitchell?
Yes.
Melanie McAver?
Yes.
And Peggy O'Neil?
No.
Motion carries 3-2. Thank you, Trip. All right, so that gets us to, I guess, public hearings. Item number H, that gets us to the Lucas and Myrtle Mini Storage Center in the Myrtletown area. This one, we will take a staff report on, please. First time it's. No, that was just down the road. That was on Hubbard Lane.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jacob Dunn. I'm presenting on behalf of Jordan Mayer, who was the assigned planner for J&amp;J Family LLC. J&amp;J Family is applying for a general plan amendment, zone reclassification, lot line adjustment and conditional use permit for the construction and operation of a mini storage center. The project is located in the Eureka Planning Area, or sorry, Eureka Community Planning Area in the Myrtletown area. Here is an aerial image of the location for J&amp;J's Family's mini storage facility, which is located at the intersection of Myrtle Avenue and Lucas Street in Eureka. The mini storage proposes access from the north side of Lucas Street. The proposed lot line adjustment would allow the parcels to be reconfigured into two parcels, which will result in a small 5,500 square foot residential lot on the northern end of the site and a remaining lot of approximately 2.1 acres, which would be commercially developed as shown on Figure 1. The home and garage on the northeast corner would become its own separate parcel. The remaining structures on the project site would be removed and replaced with an office slash caretaker building with 1,800 square feet on the first floor and 1,800 square feet on the second. The remaining commercial area would be developed and used for the mini storage area, or center. Adjustment of the site's general plan designation, shown in Figure 2, proposes changing an approximately 9,000 square foot portion of the property from medium density residential, which is RM, with a density of 7 to 30 acres per unit, or units per acre, apologize for that, to commercial general, which is CG, and to change the associated zoning from apartment professional, R4, to neighborhood commercial, C1. The purpose of the general plan amendment and zone reclassification is to allow the development of the mini storage buildings as part of a larger mini storage facility proposed on an adjacent parcel also owned by the applicant that is currently zoned C1. Increasing the area zoned commercial on the property to facilitate development of a commercial business is supported by policies in the economic development element. While this would result in a 9,000 square foot reduction of multifamily zoned property, the parcel was not identified in the county's most recent housing inventory. The site would already, is already developed with single family residents, so the project wouldn't result in any reduction of density utilized for determining compliance with the housing element law. And the final design, dimensions and configuration of the storage units have not been determined, however, based on preliminary plans, which you can see here on this slide. The overall footprint of the storage units and the office would not exceed 30,000, 37,000 square feet. The area would be equivalent to a lot area coverage of less than 45% on a total 86,269 square foot lot. And the new buildings would be two-story and a decision hasn't been made as to whether the buildings would be constructed onsite or purchased prefabricated and assembled onsite. The exterior facade would be painted metal, wood, masonry and/or similar to buildings that have, or typical buildings for mini storages in Humboldt Bay area. Portions of the lands to be developed include the GEO Greenway and Open Space Combining Zone, which is due to their proximity to the neighboring gulch lying west of the property. However, the nearest mapped water course is over 500 feet west of the project. A wetland setback of 10 feet has been identified and has been incorporated into the site plans, which you'll see on the next slide. Redevelopment of the site has, as proposed, will require removal of up to 25 mature redwood trees as well as minor grading and fill, including engineered fill of a small area beyond the break and slope. An initial study of mitigated NEG deck have been prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act. The sequel documents were circulated for public review from July 15, 2022 to August 13, 2022. And the mitigated NEG deck includes 10 mitigation measures that have been incorporated into the, into a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which is being adopted as part of the project. There was one commenter, a neighbor, requested that the new mini storage unit has ample onsite parking and does not interfere with public parking areas on Lucas Street that are used by the businesses and residences on the 1,900 block of Myrtle Avenue. Approximately nine off-street parking spaces have been provided near the office and entrance from Lucas Street. And operationally, many visitors to the facility would be temporarily parking in front of the prospective rental units before departing premises. And traffic generated from the center is anticipated to be less than the average traffic to and from commercial uses allowed in the neighborhood commercial zone district. Prior to tonight's hearing, the county found that certain conditions included in the Public Works Memo from November 17, 2020, had not been included in the staff report as posted for tonight's hearing. An addendum was prepared and sent yesterday on September 14. These conditions included site visibility requirements that have not yet been incorporated into the site plan, a wetland setback requirement, curb, gutter, sidewalk requirements, and the need for a revised site plan applying the conditions listed in the addendum, which was prior to the Board of Supervisors hearing. The applicant has shown evidence of compliance with the wetland setback requirements and prior to this hearing, in preparation for the next hearing, and will be submitting a new site plan, including the site visibility compliance as well. So this concludes my presentation. I believe the applicant's agents also here today and would like to speak on behalf of the project. County staff will be available for questions.
All right. Any questions for staff?
I just heard 10-foot setback. Is that, can you repeat that?
Yeah, there is a 10-foot wetland setback. I can show.
So.
Isn't it typically more than 10 foot?
To clarify, it is a 50-foot setback. And then what we have going on here on the east side of the, west side of the property is that there's also a gulch area. And so the recommendations in the Wetland delineation report recommended an additional 10-foot setback.
So it's 60 foot, not 10?
Correct.
I'd like just a little bit of clarification on the housing element issue. You said that even with the property being converted from the one zoning, the CU to, or from residential to the CU, there's not going to be a loss? I'm just, in, to any of the housing element that has been, you know, we've went and got certified to the state, so.
That's, that's because when it's, when the lot line adjustment is, takes place, the residence that's currently on the lot is going to still be in a residential zone on the lot. Still will stay there.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to be clear that we're not losing anything that we, if we've said that, you know, 30 houses were going to go on this site, I'm just pulling that out of the air, that, you know, we're now resuming it.
Correct. And so this, this parcel was not identified as, it was not utilized for meeting the county's regional housing needs assessment numbers.
That's, that's what I should have asked if it was part of the RENA numbers. All right. Any other questions? Go ahead, Brian.
The neighbors talk about a concern related.
The neighbors talk about a concern related to the cutting down redwood trees. Um, can you talk about how many trees will be removed and what diameters of trees?
I, I'm not exactly sure on the diameter at the moment, but I know that there will be 25 redwood trees removed. I can look.
Uh, any other questions for staff before opening this up for public comment? Okay. Um, I'll open this up for public comment, and, uh, I know we have the applicant for the owner here, so if, if you'd come up last, in case there's, you can answer any of the questions that have been brought up, that'd be great. And, uh, the first caller is 7454.
Well, it's a privilege to totally support this project as written. Uh, sometimes we do unfortunately have to cut down redwood trees. It's a pleasure to hear that it's not affecting any of our numbers with the county. Um, and, uh, they, they probably have a, probably have PG&E here, they probably have fire protection, they probably have city water, and so as far as environmental concerns, it's not like all the other projects we seem to run through on this. So strongly support, uh, a project like this. Uh, mini storage is definitely needed in our area, and, uh, I'm, I'm glad we have people. Sounds like there's also additional stuff that's contiguous to this project, so it doesn't sound like the zoning is inappropriate for this area. So again, I will strongly support, uh, this particular project. They come up to you to speak.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? Is there anybody in the public here that wishes to speak? All right. Seeing none then, I will close the public comment and bring this back to the commission. Any thoughts?
Um, I'm just looking through the, the environmental documentation to see if there was a traffic study done. Are you able to speak to that?
There was not a traffic study done, no.
Okay, so I guess how do we determine that there was no impact or less than significant impact on the traffic, uh, without a traffic study?
Sorry, we're looking at documents now. I know the tribe did a project, just a remodel of Worthington School, and they had to put in a street light there, not too far from that project because of traffic.
Yeah, um, through, through the chair. The, um, what we do have referenced in the initial study is that, um, under, uh, sequel guidelines, a project that's within one-half mile of, um, existing transit stop is presumed to have, or along an existing high-quality transit corridor, is presumed to have less than significant impacts. And so for that reason, there was no traffic study prepared here.
Do you mean like it's, it's within a certain distance of a bus stop? Is that what, is that what you're talking about?
Correct. Within one-half mile.
I'm assuming that when they put in the traffic light that was just down the street from there, that they must have done a traffic study in order to determine there needed to be a street light. So there's probably one in that area, just may not be referenced in this report.
Correct. I'm, I'm not aware of.
Are you speaking of the traffic light at Hubbard and?
By PG&E's.
Yeah, Hubbard, Hubbard and, and, just so that everybody knows what you're, you're referring to.
And that one was put in, in relationship to another project that was not even on the highway road, so I'm sure there was some sort of traffic study in that area. And you're talking about a mini storage, so people don't go there all the time, they, you know, go occasionally.
It truly is a very, um, light traffic compared to most uses.
If they put apartments in, it would be much more of a volume.
Much, much larger, yeah. Anyhow. Any other questions, or where do we want to go with this one? Noah, go ahead.
Um, yeah, well, I'm just, just reading the staff report that, that makes the case that the usual traffic for established mini storage facilities is significantly less than for retail grocery and restaurant businesses. Um, and I have no reason to doubt that, and so that does seem to be the only significant concern, or the, you know, the combination of traffic and parking, parking space loss were the main conditions, or the main concerns brought up by the couple of commentators that did comment, but, um, I'm satisfied that we are addressing those in this project's conditions, so, or I guess I should say I'm satisfied that they're not going to be a significant impact here. So with all that said, um, I'm willing to make a motion if, uh, nobody else has further questions.
Please go ahead.
Okay. Well, I would move that we, this is kind of an unusual phrasing up here at the top, um, adopt the resolutions recommending that the Board of Supervisors adopt the mitigated negative declaration, is that correct? Um, that's, that's at the top of the staff report.
That, that is correct, because this, this project includes, um, not just a conditional use permit and a lot line adjustment, but a general plan amendment and a, and a zone reclassification, that is, um, the Board of Supervisors does need to, to take that action.
Got it. Thank you for clarifying that. Well, in that case, I would move that we, um, adopt the, the resolutions recommending that the Board of Supervisors adopt the mitigated negative declaration and approve the project subject to the recommended conditions.
All right. Thank you, Noah.
Second.
Uh, thank you, Brian. Any further discussion? Okay, Trip, roll call vote, please.
Peggy O'Neil.
Yes.
Melanie McAlver.
Yes.
Brian Mitchell.
Yes.
Noah Levy.
Yes.
And Alan Bondjo.
Uh, yes. Okay, looks like we have a unanimous vote on that, and thank you, Trip. So, that. It looks like, uh, that is the last item on our agenda. Is there anything else, Director? Brian, you look like, oh, go ahead.
So this week I attended, um, Cal Poly Humboldt's initial, um, public scoping session, um, on the physical build-out of the campus in order to accommodate the large number of programs and additional students, um, that are planned to be attracted to the campus as part of the conversion to a California Polytechnic. Um, there was a member of the Arcata Planning Commission, and I was just there on my own behalf, but it seems like, um, there could be a lot of potential impacts to housing availability as they ramp up their programs, a number of students, and potentially maybe, um, slower on providing housing for them. So it may necessitate, um, discussions between our staff and their staff in terms of updating our housing element, um, in the meantime. Um, and it sounds like communication even between the city of Arcata and Humboldt State is a challenge, so I would, I would just like to suggest that our staff be proactive at reaching out, um, and having a good dialogue, because that seems to, like it can be something that can have a tremendous effect on the availability of, of housing for county residents that are already here, and they're planning on bringing in thousands of more students and staff and faculty. And so I just wanted to report that, that planning process, you know, does allow for the public to participate and comment, and so, um, I think it would be good if someone in their professional capacity, um, participated in that.
They're also going to have construction crews that are going to be in the area for long periods of time, because there's several multimillion-dollar commercial structures that they're proposing. They sent out the alumni newspaper, and I was amazed at, you know, 200 million, 300 million, you know, they're going to really be busy.
Just like to say thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. I was in attendance in that meeting. I didn't say anything, but, uh, I did monitor that, am aware of what's going on, recognized the process. The main point of that meeting, I think, was to talk about the process, that's about a three-year process that they're undertaking. Yeah.
Um, question, have, have, in this process, have they reached out to you at the county about having some kind of, you know, consortium or input that all groups will get together?
So not yet. They're really not to that stage. They were just, I think, really laying out the process that they're going to be undertaking, and what they're doing now is they're starting to undertake surveys primarily with the students on the campus, uh, to get a sense, I think, of, of what the student body concerns are, and then they will be reaching out into the community. And they did talk very much about wanting to expand those dialogues with, uh, the broader of community and jurisdictions.
Yeah.
I could see it could have an impact on the rental rates also, because if housing's scarce, that's going to increase the cost of existing rentals.
Certainly. I, I see the bigger problem not being the student housing, but the housing for the professors, the, the department heads, those, uh, because they're not going to want to live in the high-rise, you know, apartments and such that are, I, I'm assuming that, I shouldn't say that, I'm not, haven't spoke to anybody, but I've got to think when you've made it to that, that level, that you're going to want your little piece of the, of the pie and want your own house out somewhere, and I think that that's going to be in the county, that's not going to be those infill projects in the, inside of Arcata, so that's going to fall on us. That's going to be the Blue Lakes and the Field Brooks and the parts of McKinleville and parts of Eureka and, you know.
Yeah, they specifically mentioned McKinleville as an area that needed to be addressed. Um, and I will also say that, uh, we're actually in discussions with what could be a very interesting, uh, project that a property owner, developer is looking at doing to really support the Cal Poly effort, and, uh, so that will, won't be in front of the commission anytime soon, but, uh, we expect a general plan amendment, uh, zone change petition to come through in a week or so.
What community planning area is this?
In the Humboldt Bay Area Plan.
Excellent. Well, it'll be fun to watch this one. It's quite a project. Right? Any more discussion? All right. That brings us to adjournment, so with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting, and we will see you on October 6th. All right. Good night, everyone.